Order the Planning Commission meeting for February 8, 2012. And Jackie, can you call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Schaller.
Here.
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 Commissioner Platter.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Forrest.
Here.
Here. Thank you. I think our first order of business here is approval of the meeting agenda for this meeting, and I don't know if anybody has any comments or changes they'd like to make to it. If you do, please speak up.
I do have one. The lot division is listed under public hearings, so that could be under reports and recommendations. And our applicant for our project for -- that's scheduled for our public hearing is not here yet, so I might suggest that we move reports and recommendations to the -- as our first item after the consent agenda.
Okay. May I assume we need to vote on that?
Yeah.
Sure. Any other comments to the agenda? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as modified by Mr. Teague.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? All nays? None? Seeing none? It's been approved. And with that, let's see. I think we have to act on the consent agenda as well. And what do we have for the consent agenda? Mr. Teague?
It would be the approval of the minutes from the January 25 Planning Commission meeting.
And are there any comments to the minutes from the last meeting? Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All nays? Say nay. Seeing none. That's been approved. And then Carrie, I take it at this point in time, we have the opportunity to change the order of what we're going to be reviewing today and taking up -- what is it? I'm sorry, I'm out of order here. Taking up the final rezoning -- or I'm sorry, the lot division under reports and recommendations?
Certainly, we can do that one next.
Okay, our first item is a lot division at 4236.
Lynn Avenue. This is located in the northeast corner of the city. This is a look at the existing property. It is -- there's an existing single-family residence that's located here, and you can barely make out the lot line that's located here. The proposal before you is to shift this existing lot line over to match up to the property -- with the properties to the north and south. This next slide indicates that all of the property to the west, from Lynn Avenue down to the road, I believe that's Morningside Road, is all owned by the Sittles. And I apologize if I'm not pronouncing that right, but they own all of these properties that are outlined in red. So again, the proposal before you is to shift this existing lot line over to here, so the lot line that would separate these parcels would line up, up and down the block. This is a look at how the lots exist today, and this would be the resulting lots with that shift. The -- these two lots are oversized when compared to all of the lots in the neighborhood. The medians are highlighted in your staff report, and these -- both of these properties, before and after this shift in the lot line, far exceed our minimum lot sizes for medians. So with that, staff would recommend approval of the -- of this lot shift. We're not creating any new lots here, just shifting that lot line. And I can stand for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Teague?
Do you know what happens to the -- it looks like there's some water features, gazebos or anything? Do you know what happens with that when the slot line shifts? I'm just curious if that is a concern or...
I don't believe so. They could remain. This -- these part -- there's an existing single-family home located here, and another one down here. So by definition of our -- definition of tract, this could be considered two tracts. Well, it could be considered one, since it's all held in common ownership. So basically, that gazebo and that little shelter area there just becomes part of their overall property.
Any other questions? Seeing none is -- is there an applicant here that might wish to present?
I have a question.
Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none. Why don't we take this up for discussion, then? Or in the absence of discussion, if anybody has any motions?
Mr. Chair? I'll make a motion to approve the -- sorry, put the right -- the new lot creation per the staff report and recommendation.
Second the motion?
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Fisher?
Just a point of clarification for Commissioner Fisher. Is it a new lot creation or just a realignment between the two lots?
Well, it's a realignment. I was searching for the right word out of this, but I wasn't finding it. But just the realignment of the lot line.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Our applicant is here.
Mr. Teague, I take it at this point, we're going to go back to the earlier item on the final rezoning PUD? Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Our applicant has arrived, so we can move into the public hearing portion. So the item before you is a public hearing for a final rezoning to planned unit development. This would be the city's first PUD zoning district within the city, since we've amended the zoning ordinance about a year ago. The property is located at 6996 France Avenue. Closer look at the property. This is the northwest corner of 70th and France Avenue. The existing use on the site is an American Oil full-service gas station. I believe they're closed down at this point. Get another look at the building. The applicant is proposing to tear that building down and build a new 8,260-square-foot office and retail building. The uses that are proposed would be a 3,000-square-foot vitamin shop, the retail portion, and a 5,260-square-foot financial planning office. This plan is -- this is the exact same plan that the Planning Commission and council reviewed as part of Phase 1 of this preliminary approval that was received for the project. Again, there's essentially no changes that have been made. This is a look at the building plans. These, again, were the same as reviewed in the preliminary phase, or the first phase. One slight change that has been made, and this was at the recommendation of the city engineer, had a concern about the access in -- concern about the -- this, on the previous plan, the curb cut kind of angled over this way. So there was concern about right-turn movements out. The idea here is to have a right-in-only, and there would be a right-in, right-out on 70th Street. Anyone familiar with the site has seen there's a right-in, right-out movement, quite a large driveway on France Avenue. Again, that would be revised into that right-in-only. And on the 70th Street side, there's two access points, one here and one here. This access point would go away under this request, and this point would remain. Again, that's the same as we reviewed the first time around. There would be a sidewalk proposed around the building in this location here, landscaping over-story trees around the perimeter of the site, and a full complement of under-story trees. As the site exists today, there's only one tree on the site. It's located in this corner here. That tree remains, so we're getting quite an improvement over the existing conditions as the site sits today. So with that, this request requires final rezoning from PCD-4, the current zoning designation, which is only our automobile service district, to PUD planned unit development. We would be also amending the zoning ordinance that would incorporate within -- right into the zoning ordinance, the standards that would go along with this property, and then also a final development plan. So the primary issue, same as the first go-around, is this PUD appropriate for the site, and is the development reasonable? And again, as with the first go-around, staff believes that it is. The project would be consistent with the conference of plan. This site is designated for limited retail uses, and so the uses that would be allowed would be our PCD-1 planned commercial district, as we had discussed the last time. Those uses would carry forth to this site. The building is small in scale, kind of similar to the -- this is a look at the building to the north. It's a two-story office building. This is the veterinary clinic that's located to the west, and there's an existing gas station to the south. So this kind of one-and-a-half-story building would be in keeping with the area. The building or the roadway would -- a traffic study was done by WSB. Chuck Rickert is also here this evening to answer any questions we may have, but the conclusion was that the existing roadway can be supported with this use. The traffic generated is actually decreased from the service station use that exists there today. WSB also conducted a parking study, and that study concluded that the amount of parking spaces would support the proposed uses. There are 34 parking spaces available, and that study had indicated that 29 spaces would be sufficient. As we discussed in the first phase of this, the concern would be in regard to future parking. So the ordinance that's before you, that's attached as Exhibit Attachment A through -- it's seven through 10 in your staff report, but the ordinance would prohibit a bank, a coffee shop, a bakery, and the council also added a prohibition of drive-throughs, so that's incorporated into the ordinance. Also, if the use is entirely incorporated with retail users, the mezzanine would have to be turned into storage space. So the square footage that could be supported by retail is just that main level. And again, that would be written into the ordinance. If the site were to turn into all a general office, the parking could support a full 8,200 square-foot office. If it were turned into a medical office, the site could only support 7,950 square-feet of medical office. So that provision has also been written right into the ordinance. So lastly, with the PUD, with the PUD ordinance, it ensures that this specific building would be built. Again, Attachments A, 7 through 10 outline that proposed ordinance. So again, this district would be established per ordinance, property legally described, so it would only pertain to this one site. The approved plans are adopted by ordinance, so it's this specific building that would have to be built. If someone wanted to build something else, they would have to come back to the city for a -- with a PUD amendment for any other type of building. And then again, the uses would be spelled out, would be similar to the PCD-1 district. And also, there would be that prohibition on drive-throughs, bakeries, coffee shops, and banks. There wouldn't be any conditional uses. If someone wanted a use that was not specifically listed as a permitted use, it would not be allowed unless they came back and proposed a PUD amendment to allow that use, and so that would be reviewed by Planning Commission and council. The development standards would also be incorporated into the ordinance, so the setbacks are specified here. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, the PUD ordinance that's before you, and the final site plan approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the staff report. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Thanks, Carrie. Are there any questions of staff?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Fisher?
Carrie, the fact that you have this rendering up, I just want to bring up a point that, you know, this rendering was done early or in the process, and I think it's been something that's been very attractive to us, and everyone sort of thinks about this drawing when they think about this project. As I was going through my packet this weekend, you know, I noticed something that I hadn't noticed as much the last time through, and that is, you know, the details, if you look at the elevations that are behind this rendering, are a bit different. I'm not saying dramatically. I mean, the general shape of the building is the same, but the amount of stone, the glass, and the relationship to the stone, and that sort of thing, is different. And I'm not saying if that's good or bad. I mean, because we're not dictating design necessarily. I just want everyone to be very clear that you're not necessarily approving what's in that rendering. You're essentially approving what's in the elevations, which are much harder to read. I just don't want people to come back later and say, "Oh, my gosh, this isn't the same building we approved." So we should be very clear about that. And, you know, if there's some specifics, you know, that maybe can be pointed out that's different. And again, design evolves. That's not the issue, but I just want to make sure. This is our first PUD we're approving, where you kind of dial in on these kind of issues. I want to make sure people are understanding that.
It is. You're absolutely correct. So this is the elevation, and I did notice that, that there were some differences between the two, and I'd asked the applicant to provide some additional renderings. They haven't done that, I don't believe. Maybe they've got some...
My guess is another rendering will look just wonderful. It's just you're comparing a black-and-white elevation to, you know, a beautiful drawing here, and I just, you know, want people to understand.
Excellent point.
It's slightly different.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you, Carrie. The applicant like to make a presentation? You're going to be showing...
I have a document.
Great, very good. Give us your name and address.
Yes, Sheldon Berg, 1475 Holton Street in St. Paul, representing DJR and the applicant. And in response to Commissioner Fisher's questions, I did bring out updated rendering, which shows basically the updates to the elevations, and is reflected then in a rendering, as well as the colors and things. And so I'll put that over here on the board to display to you. A second. And I apologize for one item that the panels -- I brought also -- pardon me, one second. I brought also the materials board. The -- and so the stone is, I mean, the stone is the same as what we originally proposed. This drawing's a little bit darker. I apologize for the -- I think there's a combination of the overhead as well as the printing that we had, that the panels behind the signage here are really a much lighter tan kind of color that complements the stone, as you see here. And then the storefront is a dark bronze, as well as the overhang at the top and the kind of sun shading, kind of at the mid-level of the elevations. So I don't know if anyone can see the -- maybe I should hold up the color board, because you probably can't see over the... That gives a much better, I think, representation of the true colors for you. And then, as you notice, we have a lot of clear-story windows on the north side of the building. That brings in a lot of light to the second story for the office use.
What -- may I ask what the sign is on the south?
The sign is, that's for the vitamin shop, and that's just a kind of a rough representation.
And it's over -- it looked like windows in the original rendering, but this is now a flat, dark surface?
It's -- well, it's not dark. It's this color here, and so it's really not terribly dark. I think this rendering doesn't do it absolute justice.
Okay. But the windows are gone. We're now with a flat surface.
Yes, exactly. That is the difference. So you have a full complement of storefront glass around the corner at the pedestrian level, and then there's a metal panel behind the signage above.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Schroder?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to ask them a little bit about the lighting. You make a point in your letter about creating a pedestrian environment, bringing the building up to France Avenue, but there's no site lighting demonstrated on that side of the building, either France Avenue or the 70th Street side. Have you done any photometric studies? I know that there's light on France Avenue, but I don't know how much light, and I don't know that you can actually depend on lights from those two roadways to illuminate the pedestrian areas that we're advocating for in this plan. Can you just speak to that a little bit?
Sure. I believe there are some streetlights along that area, as well as we do have planned some additional accent lighting for the canopy area above. In this location, that's going to be more of lighting the building as maybe perhaps more than lighting pedestrian area, but there are some -- I mean, for illustrative purposes, let's just say, the traffic light and things have not been shown here. There's also some streetlights along France Avenue, of course, up and down, and then there's also lighting at the entries, things like that, as far as so once you get kind of past the street lighting that's kind of on the periphery of the site, there are lighting -- there is lighting for the entries and things like that as well.
But you haven't calculated the illumination levels without the public realm lighting as a part of this?
Not specifically, no. Pardon me. Not on that side of the building, because the site lighting is much more directed toward where the parking areas are at, because it's obviously can't count on any of the street lighting and things like that.
But you do have pedestrian entries on the France Avenue facade, so that's my concern.
And those have lighting around them.
Okay.
And then the canopies over those.
It's not shown, so I just wanted to make certain, and I don't know the relative amounts, but it seems like that's something we should be paying attention to if we're trying to create a more pedestrian-centered realm. The other thing, on some of the combinations of uses that are identified in the possible parking demand, you end up just shy of the total number of parking spaces available. This winter has been unique in that we've had no snow, but in other winters, we would have significant snow, and the plan doesn't actually identify any place where snow storage would happen. You have very limited space beyond the curb for snow storage before you start pushing it onto somebody else's property. So how will snow storage happen on the site?
I believe that the -- by and large, we do have the five-foot strip around the perimeter, which is limited in its ability or capacity for snow storage, that's correct. And so any substantial snow events are probably going to have to be taken off-site.
So at the point at which you surpass the maximum number of parking spaces in the combinations, which I think is 33 of the 34 parking spaces, as soon as one of those parking spaces is consumed by snow, you'll be removing snow from the site.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Or not of staff, of the applicant? I guess not. Thank you. Carrie, I take it we would open up the public hearing at this point?
Right.
The public hearing is open. I'm going to read a quick statement for benefit of the public hearings. During public hearings, the chair will ask for public testimony after the city staff members have made their presentation, which is what we've done. If you wish to testify on the topic, you are welcome to do so, as long as your testimony is relevant to the discussion. To ensure fairness to all speakers and to allow the efficient conduct of a public hearing, speakers must observe the following guidelines. Individuals must limit their testimony to three minutes. The chair may modify times as deemed necessary. Do not try to repeat remarks or points of view made by prior speakers, and limit testimony to the matter under consideration to the extent possible. And in order to maintain a respectful environment for all of those in attendance, the use of signs, clapping, cheering, or booing, or any other form of verbal or nonverbal communication is not allowed. And having said that, I don't know if there's anybody present who wishes to make an appearance on the public hearing behalf, so I'm going to ask the small handful of people in the crowd here to indicate whether you're interested or not. Seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. And I take it probably I needed a motion to open and to close, as I think about in retrospect. But if there's a motion along those lines, I certainly would appreciate it.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Discussion, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Seeing none. Public hearing is closed. I think at this point, we can open up to discussion amongst the members of the commission. Yes? Commissioner Platter?
See, Carrie, I have two questions for you. One is on the building signage. We're not being asked to approve the signage in here, right? Does that come under a different approval piece?
That's correct. There is a provision in the ordinance that says that the signage needs to meet the standards of the PCD-1 zoning district, which are -- that requirement is essentially 15% of the building side in which the signage is located. So those would be the provisions that would guide this.
That would continue to apply to this.
Correct.
And the other one I have, and maybe it's just more of a comment than anything, but and as Commissioner Fisher stated, I know designs evolve, but between what's presented at the rendering stage and what's presented at the final stage, you know, a lot can happen, and there could be items that fall off, or it gets value-engineered, other things can happen. So what does the city have in place to make sure it's of intent from the original renderings to what actually gets presented? How does that work through as someone? Are you reviewing that, or is that through another function?
I do review that, and I would suggest if the Planning Commission is looking for an approval, recommendation of approval, I would amend the condition that talks about the building elevations, date stamped January 6. Those are the ones that are included in the packet. I would amend that to say, "Building elevations, date stamped January 6," and the date of today's meeting, February 8. So the plan that was presented this evening would carry forward as the recommendation. So when I'm reviewing a building plan, assuming the council were to approve this, those plans would have to be consistent with those drawings. The building elevation, the kind of the black-and-white one that's in the packet, and then the new one this evening.
Yeah, I'm just making sure the intent is followed through from what it was, so it doesn't become something else in between.
Commissioner Fisher?
Could I get Mr. Rickert to answer a few questions for me? Or maybe rather than answer questions, could you give us an overview a little bit?
Or maybe rather than answer questions, could you give us an overview a little bit? Last time we talked about this, there was a discussion about how traffic would flow as you're leaving the site onto Seventieth. Could you walk us through that a little bit? Is it strictly right turn out?
No, that, that second access, or the access on the Seventieth Street will be a full movement access. They will be able to turn left or right out of the site.
Okay, I think, I know we had a discussion about it, and I couldn't remember, I think we were trying to, on the, on the one hand, we were saying, well, maybe you turn right and go to the
The roundabout.
Roundabout, but I think it's better to leave that up to the discretion of
The median that's there today doesn't go past that driveway, so unless we would extend that median on Seventieth Street further, you know, to the west, you know, there's, there wouldn't be any way to restrict that left turn out anyway. You know, if, if it gets so congested, you know, traffic on Seventieth throws more than what we anticipated, you know, they do have that option to go down to the roundabout, turn around and come back.
Right, and they would do that just out of necessity
Exactly.
Rather than us forcing that to happen.
Exactly.
Because in reality, the magnitude of traffic leaving the site would be less than today, anyway.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
While you're up there, I'm just curious, and you can set me straight on this, on page A32, which is the table that shows the estimated site trip generation, under the redevelopment alternatives, it says 1,000 square feet under all of, after all of those. Is that just a filler, or?
Yeah, that's the unit that's used, you know, for, for measurement. So the, if you look at the, the first number under size, it's three, and it's, so it's 3,000 square feet is what we're looking, so it's the unit.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, and I'm not sure, it factors into the parking calculations, but does the 8,260 square feet of building size include the mezzanine in the office? Or is the mezzanine not included in that?
The mezzanine is included in the 8,260 square feet.
I guess I'll start.
How about it?
Just small things, but I think part of the purpose of the PUD is that we can zone it according to how it seems best for that site. I would like to see some bike racks on the site plan, or a bike rack on the site plan. I think that the illustration of the building that was presented tonight by the proponent is, personal opinion only, I find it much less attractive than the one that we got in our packet. And I think it's because of the elimination of the windows. It looks like the stone's been moved on the lower level somewhat, too. And I'm still concerned about, on page three of our report, there's a staff comment that the loading to the building will take place in the parking lot during off-peak hours. I'm not sure if that's something that we plan to enforce or not. I am, I don't believe that they would ever purposely do differently, but that is somewhat of a concern, because it's a rather tight parking lot, and the, I'm especially concerned also about trash hauling, because again, one of the parking spaces is right up against that area, and that's also an area that then intersects at the corner with the other parking places and the incoming traffic, and, so that's, looks like a potential bottleneck as well. That's all for now.
When you raise those things, are you, are you making suggestions that you'd like to see something done to?
I would like to see a bike rack, and I would like some further discussion up here, if anybody else cares to, about the change in the appearance, and if anybody else is concerned about the flow through the parking lot.
Mr. Teague?
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. I would agree with Commissioner Forrest's assessment on the bike parking racks. Our city code requires that off-street bike parking spaces have to be provided for any parking lot with over twenty spaces. So that is a code requirement. You could add that as a condition, that bike racks should be provided on the site, per city code.
And how about the trash hauling issues? Does that pose a concern at all?
Yeah, that would be regulated under our nuisance ordinance. So it would be complaint basis, essentially.
Is that so much a complaint basis? Who's going to complain? The people who are backed up to France? Or is it, I mean, that's an unlikely scenario in my mind. I, I think that maybe it's completely feasible, I don't know, but it just looks like a real dense corner back there, especially because there is a peninsula coming out from the building as well, on the west side of the building.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess I would agree with Commissioner Forrest, you know, if you were to put both renderings up on a wall and ask any of us to pick which one seems to be a more desirable building design, we'd probably all go with the first one, not the current one. I think the birds in the sky would look happier in that one, too, I don't know. But at the same time, I recognize, you know, I'm sure as you get into budgets and everything else, as you're developing the design, things are going to change. And in defense of the design team, you know, I think the elevations are pretty similar to what they were last time, just, I think the juxtaposition with the old rendering and the newer elevations just didn't really bite on that, or catch that, or whatever, at least I didn't. So I, you know, I would be curious if anyone else is uncomfortable with the design as it exists today, or generally okay. And it is unfortunate that the amount of glass seems to be, well, I don't, actually, I don't know that there's less glass, because there's less stone, so there's probably more glass on that lower level, certainly less glass on the upper level. But it's a reduction in the stone, and just sort of the, the play of the horizontal features. So, anyway, just be curious what others, what others think.
Chair Platter?
Yeah, I, this one seems pretty close, you know, to what it, what it was. There's some very, you know, the glazing is probably the biggest difference between those. So it's, seems close. I'm concerned more on, on other ones that come in, in particular, that come in between these two phases. And there's a huge amount of value engineering, the stone we were sold on, or this, the glazing, or the spandrel, or the, you know, Lucabond panels, or whatever's on there, is all of a sudden gone off. That's what I'm concerned about. So I don't know if there's a, kind of like I said before, there would be a mechanism placed to catch that before those, those differences, so we're not all of a sudden coming back to something that is completely different than what was presented and approved since sketch plan approval.
Yeah, if there's big changes, if they remove brick, they would have to go back again through this process. It would essentially be an amendment to the PUD by changing the, the building elevations that they've submitted.
Right, but I'm, I'm saying, what they submitted, the rendering the first time, and now what they've submitted, the differences between that. I'm not worried, once this is in here as, as approved, then we have what we have, but previous to what's been sold as the renderings potentially, versus what shows up as the actual working drawings, that's, that's my concern, the differences potentially between those two phases.
Yeah, if this is, at the complete discretion of the city through the PUD ordinance, if you're not comfortable with those changes, we could ask them to come back with the plans that we've, that they had submitted previously.
I'd also ask somehow that they come forth with the changes that happen versus us trying to figure it out from the plans, from the renderings. I mean, a list, if they've changed things, I would ask that going forward, I don't know how we would do that, but there is a difference in list of what, from what they previously had in the sketch plan approval, for example, to what they now are proposing as the, as the final piece.
And actually, if I could just maybe ask that question, and recognizing, we understand this, the change wasn't made at this, it was the, the version before, if I go back and understand it right, but, and we should have asked the question earlier, but could you just explain just some of the basic, I mean, and, and again, we're not saying they're drastic changes, but just some of the, the reasoning for the difference in glass and stone, and, and what the design intent was?
Pardon me, thank you again. I think there's probably a list of three items, perhaps, that have been changed from the original sketch plan review, which is when we initially generated the rendering that you first were looking at. From that position, we have a tenant that wanted a second, well, wanted a little more square footage from the original, which was around 6,600 square feet. They want a little bit extra, so we added kind of a, let's just call it a mezzanine space, and therefore, the, on the north side of the building, that kind of clear story and, and upper element was extended toward the rear, and so created a, a clear story along the whole north face of the building. On the south face, the, the tenant there really didn't have a lot of interest in some of the upper glazing that we had, because it conflicted with some of what they're trying to do with their merchandising, the way that they lay out their store. So, and they had also an interest for some signage on the corner, and signage over glass wasn't going to work real well, so we integrated the metal panel and expanded where that location was. And then below that, that, the storefront was expanded to some degree, and to kind of mitigate the, the loss of the upper glazing. I think those are the, the kind of more significant changes from the original to the next. And then the, I think that's, that, those are, those are the main elements.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Platter? Mr. Chair, while, while we have the applicant here, I wonder if I could follow with another question about the glazing. I agree with Commissioner Fisher, I think it's unfortunate, the height at the corner has seen reduced glazing and become basically a backdrop for the sign, but I also understand the, the nature of, of the retail function. I guess my question is, where you're showing storefront, where you're showing glazing, is that all vision glass? In other words?
It is. All of this is spandrel or opaque.
With, I think, there's one small exception on the north side of the building, where there's a floor coming right in front of the glass, and we have some taller things, and I believe it's noted as a, a spandrel panel, which means that it's going to have a, a black coating on the back of the glass. And that's on, just the, just the north elevation, you can see there's a crosshatch in, in that location.
I think that's on sheet A200.
A200, correct. It's, and then it's elevation A2. Can you see that location? So it's, it's really quite minimal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Forrest, or Commissioner Forrest, I'm sorry.
So is there any glazing at all on the south side, upper story?
On the south side, upper story, let's see, seriously, and above, see that?
Above the sign?
Above the sign?
Or is that just all flat?
Not on the south side, no.
On wall, okay.
Thanks, we may call you back again, but. Any other discussion at this point? Commissioner Forrest?
I'm just going to be the stinker tonight. I guess, once again, I think the appearance as it's presented, and again, it's kind of difficult to tell exactly what's where, my concern is, it just doesn't look as friendly from the street, or as welcoming, and I'm, I don't want us to fall into ending up with a product that isn't how we personally envisioned it, similar to a project that we had further down France earlier on.
I wonder if for discussion purposes, it would be worth at least giving some thought to how we might react, had we not seen the earlier versions, and we're looking at this one cold. I don't know if that changes anybody's perspective on it, but.
Well, and, and it's also, I think, really important, you know, when we get sketch plan, it's a concept, and we're approving, we're really, we're not approving anything, we're, we're discussing whether or not we think that concept has legs, that it's worth moving forward with. So it was really, and this is why I brought it up the way I did, that, you know, if you go and look at what we approved in the preliminary, it's not very different than what's here now. I think we, as we're getting used to a new and different way of looking at, like a PUD, it's our first time through it.
Sure.
And in many ways, I'm pointing it out more for us, and how in our process, we have to be able to recognize these things, and, or we have to know what we're, you know, be a little bit more upfront about what we're asking, and, or what we're requiring. You know, for instance, maybe we should have been asking for an updated color rendering at that time, which might have been more revealing to us. So, but I like the question, you know, if this was the design that came out at first, we probably would have been just fine with it. And, and I'm not suggesting that it's a bad design or anything, it's just a little different. So, anyway, for whatever that's worth.
Mr. Forrest?
So this is our last shot at this, though, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I am kind of disappointed, though, because my understanding is that the final development plan stage, we have a final plan, and that everything we see on the paper should be what they plan to go forward with, and, so I, I, it just seems a little bit tenuous at this point. I don't feel, I feel like things aren't as solid as I would have expected them to be at a final plan. Like, does it have a lower level? I'm just curious. If you can nod, yes or no?
Basement level, when you?
Basement level.
No, no basement.
Okay, so on the plans, there's no bathrooms or anything even indicated, and that's the kind of thing you'd think might be in before the, the tenants identified their buildup desires. So if, I mean, you have to put your utilities somewhere, anyway, it would be nice to know some of the things that are final.
Mr. Chair?
Just a couple of observations. I, I don't know if this had been the original drawing, if I would have said no, but it is disappointing, having, I, I agree with several of the observations made here tonight. Having seen the other, it's, you can't erase it from your mind, and it was clearly a slightly more sophisticated design to me. This looks more industrial, and, and that's too bad on a primary corner on that street. I, I don't know that it's a deal breaker for me, but I, but I do have to observe that. This is a much more industrial-looking building. I actually, as, since we're starting into these PUD discussions, I, I'm resonating a bit with, I guess, a few other details. I'm, I'm focusing after the comments about lighting made earlier, that, that I would like to see us, I think, tie some of that down a bit in granting a PUD status. In flipping through these pages, as was observed by the commissioner, there isn't much lighting here. There's a, there's a note of a city streetlight that's on a corner, that's tied to a, I think, an interchange, and a note of two lights on the, to the back of the property that may or may not be part of this property, may be part of the property next door. And I guess I would like some more detail about things like that, because that would add to the streetscape friendliness and approachability of the building. of the building, even if the structure itself is a little more institutional than we had at first, uh, looked at it to be, um, the, the plantings that are noted here, uh, look substantial, we haven't talked about that in terms of landscaping, although I don't, I, maybe, maybe the proponent could comment, you know, we can only bring in trees a certain size as we start out, uh, maybe a little more detail on what some of those landscaping items are going to be, that would be helpful.
Mr. Berg, did you want to take a shot at that?
Sure, would you like exhibits, or just general discussion? Um, in terms of, let me just kind of maybe go backwards, in terms of landscaping, um, the size and, and, um, varieties are shown on landscape plan, um, and they are, uh, in terms of, say, let's just say, maybe, maybe if you're concentrating on over-story trees and things, I believe we have fifteen on site, um, currently, there's one, and, um, and they're located in areas which will be very much an improvement for the pedestrian as well as for the development itself, um, and for the streetscape that we have, um, along both France and, um, Seventieth Street, um, in terms of lighting, there are, um, two, you know, pole light, uh, pole-mounted fixtures on, on the rear that provides the general, uh, lighting for the, uh, parking area, there is also, there will also be, um, lighting around the entries as well, accent lighting, um, at kind of the pedestrian level, um, and then on the north side of the building, where the, the angle parking is, there is a, a building mounted light as well to provide, um, illumination for that side.
May I ask a good question? If, so if I'm looking at the, and just maybe that I wasn't reading this, but if I'm looking at the landscaping plan, for example, these black boxes, are those to be lights?
Correct, if you're, yes.
It would appear that there are two, no.
There's two in the, there's.
Those are truncated dome at the pedestrian crosswalks.
That are already?
Well, there's, there's two black boxes at the rear of the parking on the west side of the site.
Yes.
Those are the lighting, as well as one that's, um, what seemingly attached or next to the building on the north side, that's also lighting.
Okay.
Um, and then that's the general illumination lighting that we would look at, especially in terms of cutoffs for the city requirements on the amount of light you have at the perimeter of the site, um, there's, there's, uh, regulations as far as the maximum light that you can have spilling over, um, to the neighboring property, which I think is point one foot candles, or maybe point two.
Point one, it's, yeah, ten foot candles.
So, such that you're not just having a blaze of light in there, and annoying your neighbors as well as drivers, so, sensitive to that condition.
Mr. Potter? To follow up on that, do, Carrie, is a photometric plan part of the submission requirements?
It's typically, we typically, oftentimes, we do see that, um, but it, we always see it as part of the building, building permit package, and they're required to meet that, those four candles.
Yeah, that seems important to check for, similar to, um, you know, you would have noted the absence of bicycle parking, I think, when it came through, um, my concern is on the pedestrian streetscapes on Seventieth and France, that we're, lighting-wise, we're relying on just one street light, which is designed for traffic purposes, I think, more than pedestrian, and so that's a big, a big kind of gap in the design being presented here. So how, can you go into a little more detail about the, the requirement for, how you check, you know, for appropriate lighting for pedestrian safety?
Usually, usually the concern is there's too much light being proposed, um, our standards are ten-foot candles when it adjoins a commercial property, and three-foot candles if it adjoins residential property, so that those are pretty high illumination, uh, maximum standards, but usually there's, uh, the plans that we see don't go anywhere near that kind of lighting.
I guess, but now we're talking about lighting that makes it seem welcome, some type of landscape lighting, not necessarily, um, safety lighting, or lighting of the sign, which I imagine they will be doing somehow, and right now, we don't know if they're doing a lexan sign with the light from behind it, or if they're going to be doing it lit exteriorly, um, that sign and the lack of windows are still bugging me, but, one of the things in the staff report is that one of the conditions for final approval is that the, um, property owner is responsible for replacing any required landscaping that dies, for how long, and, um, is there a time period on that, Carrie, I can see that their subcontractor looks like guarantees it for a year, but for the larger, um, trees and trubs and things, I would think that a couple of years might be appropriate, just because you can, if it gets off to a bad start one year, you may not see it till the next year, and also, some of these trees can be, well, most of the trees that are on here can end up twenty-five to, uh, thirty-five feet wide and forty-five feet high, so, um, obviously, we don't want them to, uh, necessarily replace them with, well, at least, or say they can't, uh, remove them or something.
The landscape bond that we obtain as part of the building permit ensures the life of that tree for two years, and, but that condition does run with the property, so if there's something that, that dies and they don't replace, we've got that condition to go back and make sure that they do replant something that dies after that two-year period.
And that continues in perpetuity, more or less? Commissioner Shorter?
I've, I've asked the same question before, and I've understood the response to be that the landscape that's demonstrated in this plan has to be in place forever, the fallacy is there's no one here at the city who will ever go back and check, so rely on people like us to go out and say, I remember, there were more daylilies on this site than there are now, when this was approved, there's no way to actually go back and check it, unless we're all paying attention and watching what's going on, and you've noticed, I've, I've noticed in projects where trees in parking lots that we thought were going to survive have been hit by cars, have been removed and not replaced, so, I think there's, there's issues with that, but I don't know that there's a good solution, other than just the vigilance of people like us who might be paying attention to what happens to the sites over time.
Which means, Commissioner Forrest, that you would have to be the vigilant one to stand out here, year in and year out.
Thank you, I feel better that it's a, a two-year minimum there, that we're all keeping our distance.
We could actually do a planning commission tour of sites we've approved on an annual basis, just to do a plant count.
There you go.
It's a lot of fun.
Carrie, if, if, in the final analysis, it was the discretion of the, uh, commission not to approve this plan, um, I take it would then become incumbent upon the applicant to start all over again, if they were inclined to proceed, or how would that be handled?
If the planning commission were to deny the request, this is a recommendation, it would still go forward to the, to the city council. I guess you would have a couple options, if there are concerns, um, you could continue action and ask, ask the applicant to come back with a lighting plan, um, some more color renderings, um, or you could, if you were inclined to approve it, and make sure those items were presented to the city council, you could do it that way as well, you know, condition it upon submittal of the lighting plan, um, more renderings, and, so you would have essentially those three options.
Okay.
I think, and I'm not making a motion yet, but I think, uh, an appropriate way to do it, I mean, I think, you know, we got a rendering tonight, it's just that we didn't get it early enough to kind of study it and all that, I think if the council gets the rendering ahead of time, has a chance to review, then they'll be able to kind of make some judgments that way, and, you know, we can certainly call out the fact that, you know, there are changes, and they should be paying particular attention, I think the material board is fine, the materials are all fine, it's just, it's really just changing how much and where and all that, so, um, and even with the, you know, some of the other things we've talked about, I think we can just sort of add those as, as things that we'd like to see a resolution on as it moves forward.
Sounds like you're approaching a motion, though.
I think close.
You did.
Apparently, nobody else has bugged as much, that the second story is pretty much turned into a billboard instead of a, a window, um, a wall of windows, or having a, at least a row of windows up there, and it affects the lighting inside the building also, which eventually affects future use, um, so I guess I just, I'm just calling it out for the record as well, that the, to note that there has been a change in the second story from what was presented to us, and it's, to me, it's significant, because, especially with the big sign there, because, we've seen other buildings that are up close to France Avenue that then have the large signage, and that's pretty much all that you notice, is a big sign on a wall versus an attractive building that looks welcoming, and a place to, um, as a destination, or you have, you have that gathering spot out in front, which is great, but, I mean, I, I would think that that might even decrease the traffic that comes through that front door, if there is any in the future, just because it doesn't look like a welcoming entrance.
Commissioner Fisher?
Okay, I understand that I'm the one that brought this up, right, but, but I really, I've been sitting here a lot, thinking about Chair Carpenter's comment, um, had we, had this been the, you know, the drawings that came to us at first, I think our comment would have been, wow, look at that, retail with a lot of glass, and it's all in perspective, and think about how many, and again, I'm not telling you that I like this as much as the other one, but putting it in perspective, um, we've looked at a lot of retail designs here, where we've had to fight and claw and scratch to get a little bit of glass, uh, because the comment is always, we have stuff behind the glass, and then if you get the glass, it's really not, you know, transparent, where you can see in what's happening inside, so, all things considered, there's still quite a bit here at street level, where the pedestrian's going to feel the connection or not feel the connection to this building, um, which I believe is actually more important than what's happening up higher, um, and granted, it is retail, and they're going to need signage, so, you know, that all has to balance out as well, so I guess I'm, I'm able to sort of look past that a little bit, it's, you know, I'm not as excited about it, but, you know, it's still, I think, if you do the test, you know, had we seen this first, I think we would have been generally okay.
Mr. Potts? Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think, um, I agree with Commissioner Fisher, and, uh, perhaps if fu- future applicants are taking notes, uh, they'll note not to necessarily bring back the sketch plan rendering, um, for the, the second review, or, or perhaps a note to ourselves to, um, be very clear during sketch plan review, the things that, that we're responding to, um, perhaps even, even more questions about the materials in addition to the glass, because I think, you know, three different people might picture three different things if they look back at that, uh, sketch plan review that now are, are suddenly changed, um, and I, uh, you know, whether that, I don't think there was ever intended to be occupiable space up on the second floor behind the glass there, but it would be easy to imagine a large, um, large daylight space that, in its current incarnation, may have a twelve-foot ceiling and, uh, you know, nothing up above, we just think we can't even make judgments on that, so, I guess enough, enough said. Mr. Platter?
I'd have a comment to that, and it may be somewhat disagreeable, but, um, what, again, I'll get back to what was sold as a sketch plan was this, uh, whether, true, it's a sketch plan, but that's what came in, that's what was sold, that's what people, for the, at least myself, expected very, something very similar, I don't want this to become where someone brings in a bunch of eye candy, and then along the way, cheapens it up, or decides not to do this, and that's okay, because I don't think it is okay, I think this needs to become and taken seriously the first time through, and also what's going to be approved, and if there's significant differences, I'm not saying this one has a huge amount, I, although I do disagree, or I, I'm sad that the glass has gone above, and to your point, it is a big billboard at that point, and at fifteen percent, fifteen percent of areas, that's what they're allowed for signage, I mean, that, that could just all be their sign up there, and I don't think this was presented that way initially, as presented as the corner of Edina, corner coming in, and now it's become, I mean, I like retail too, but it's become that retailer in that corner, so, that's just my comments, and I think, going forward, at least myself, that I want to see what changed between them, and I want to see why it changed, before, uh, we get into the approval pieces on that, so, here's my comments.
Commissioner Forrest?
Now, we've had a sketch plan, we all, we've also seen a preliminary plan, which was probably the one we're referring to here tonight, because there was actually paperwork that went with it, that was more detailed, and that we were looking at, and, but I think I, my understanding, the reason we decided to implement the whole PUD process is that we do have control, that we can be nitpicky, that we can, um, you know, there's, there's going to be some give and take here, so, I would personally, I'd like to see at least some, some clear story windows on that second level, up above the signage, something to, or whatever is architecturally pleasing, other than just flat panels, because I look at the, the colors there, and they're nice colors, but then when I imagine there's just going to be a blank wall there, that isn't, I think you brought up a good point, Commissioner Platter, that, uh, we did talk about this being kind of an entryway to Edina, that it was going to be kind of a landmark location, and, uh, I don't have anything concrete on that one, but I think it's something we really should keep in mind, and that our job here with a PUD is to have that kind of flexibility.
I'd take it even a step further a little bit, like, not only perhaps were we thinking that, but I think that was actually how, in the very original presentation, I think that was actually how it was pitched to us, so I, I think there's, there's obviously some legitimacy to those comments, I think.
Mr. Chair? I might as well weigh in on the architecture as well, um, when I, first, first of all, the sketch plan is non-binding for us, and I would assume the same applies to the proponent, that it's non-binding on them, so if they show something in sketch plan, they're not bound to follow through, and it's a, it's a conceptual review, trying to feel where everybody's going in this project, I think the major difference between the preliminary plan elevation, particularly at the south end of the building, and what we see in the final plan, is not the aluminum panels, but the lack of definition of the pedestrian entry from the street, um, in the preliminary plan, it's highlighted by a singular, singular canopy over the doors, in the final plan, it's a continuous metal shade all the way around, we've lost that definition of pedestrian entry point, and it's also reflected in the lack of the expansion of the glass at the street level, up into the glass, up into the second level, in the preliminary plan, it was, it was very clear where the pedestrian entry point was, it was clear even without having to look for a door, we've lost that, and I think if, I think the, if we're looking for a direction to give to the developer to bring back, if we're going to ask them to make some, some modifications, it has to go back to something substantive, other than we just don't like metal panels, I think we've lost the basic form of an orient, a building oriented to pedestrians, by virtue of how you find, how a pedestrian finds their way to the building, we've lost that level of definition, I look at the street sides of the building now, and it feels like it could be the backside of the building, because we haven't given any cues to people, other than the door, the door itself, how people find their way into the building, if they're on France Avenue.
And also, without breaking up the height of the windows, as was on the, um, preliminary plan's illustration, the, uh, lower level just looks like any other glass drugstore storefront or something, that, just one flat wall of display glass, and, uh, it just, it does look like a strip mall entrance, instead of a, uh, an attractive building entrance that we want to use as an example of our first PUD.
Commissioner Trukowski?
Um, I also think it's kind of lost its versatility, because, um, when I see the nude depiction, I see a vitamin shop, but I don't really see a medical office or an office building, and obviously, that could be changed, like, in the future, but, I don't think we should be shaping our judgment about, or around. be shaping our judgment about or around the fact that there would be a vitamin shop sign there. Like, I think we should consider, um, all the other uses for the building.
That's a good comment. Commissioner Schorr.
In an effort to move this along, I'd like to offer a few suggestions to the commission about how we might proceed. I think generally, we have a plan that conforms to what we're seeing in the preliminary plan. I wasn't here to review that, I wasn't here during the sketch plan. You all know what happens when you don't show up. So, um, but I would like to make a few suggestions that we consider, um, as additional conditions to those that were outlined by staff in the staff report. And these are in no particular order, and kind of as I've been tracking through the, the comments. First, I would suggest that we need to see illumination levels sufficient to put, to support an active and sa- safe pedestrian realm, um, along 70th Street and France Avenue, be demonstrated by the development through photometrics, and, um, uh, uh, that, that, I guess that's enough. We need to see that they've actually done that. And more than just photometrics, it'd be interesting to actually see how they plan to do it, how they plan to achieve it. I don't think we should be relying on the overhead streetlights of France Avenue to create the safe and inviting pedestrian realm, because it was, those lights were never meant to do that. I think the second thing, um, in, in the parking area, the applicant said that, and I would like to see this as a condition, that snow will be removed from, from the site at the point where stored snow consumes one parking space. That's the amount of flexibility that they have in the calculations that were done, um, by our consultant. The third is that they provide bicycle parking to meet city codes in a place that's logical on the site, that it's not hidden, that it's prominent, safe, all the things that we would have looked for in, uh, providing bicycle storage facilities on a site. We talked a little bit about truck movements. We don't have virtue of seeing truck movements, um, demonstrated on this site. I think they're difficult, as, uh, Commissioner Forrest noted, particularly because of the planted peninsula island on the northwest corner of the site. Um, I think we also said that we would like to see a more definitive rendering of colors and finishes brought forward, uh, if it's not to us, at least to the city council. And then, as I try and encapsulate this discussion about the evolution of the design of the building from preliminary plan to final plan, I think what it's lost is that articulation of the France Avenue entry to the south tenant space, and I would like to see that redefined and brought back into the plan. If I was to continue, I would offer a motion to wrap all of those things into, uh, the staff's recommendation to, uh, recommend to the city council that we approve the final rezoning to PUD and the final development plan, conditioned on the staff, staff report and those six points that I just enumerated.
Second.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
It was, okay.
Then it turned into one.
And, and it was seconded.
It was seconded already. Is there any discussion, any further discussion?
So, just to be clear, the motion is suggesting that this moves along to the city council with these conditions?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Scher.
I concur. I, I thank the commissioner. Uh, I, I think those are, uh, that, that represents an excellent way to address the issue, uh, that in conjunction with the other conditions that, you know, were also, or the other circumstances that were all already enumerated in the staff report.
Commissioner Forrest, this strikes me that it touches on much of what you were also raising. Do you feel that way?
I do. I, I think that's a really reasonable suggestion, and I also agree, and I think it's really, um, very helpful that Commissioner Schorr pointed out the, the lack of the definition of the entries on France, and I think that is a lot of what I'm missing there, so thanks.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Say nay. The ayes have it? Thank you. Carrie, I believe that wraps up the substance of what we have going on today. I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments they want to raise with, uh, staff or at the panel here? Seeing none? There's a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, because I'm sure there's no nay.